Okay, good evening, everybody. I will call to order the October first, two thousand and twenty-four zoning board of appeals meeting to order. My name is Jim Wentz, the chairman of the board. Joining me are regular members Ron Stelmac, Kristen McPhail, and Ben Maene, and alternate members Brendan Liberati and Claire Bajoni. I hope I got that right, Claire.
Yes, you did.
All right, very good. So we have one matter for public hearing tonight, which is file number fourteen twenty-eight thirty-seven Parkview Lane. It's an application for proposed variance of section three point one point seven to permit twenty-seven percent coverage in lieu of the required fifteen percent located at thirty-seven Parkview Lane, Matthew and Stacy Mezzick owners. Hope I got that correct. So we will open the proceedings with the applicant making their presentation and explaining to us their application and why they think it warrants our consideration, and then we'll take it from there.
Making sure I'm on mute, hello?
Good evening.
Evening, how are you?
Good.
Good. So yes, I added a little patio to my house.
But just for the record, sir, I'm sorry, you just need to say your name for the record and your your address, and then go ahead and make your presentation.
You got it. So Matt Mezzick, thirty-seven Parkview Lane, Monroe, Connecticut?
Thank you.
Thank you. So yeah, I added a patio to the property, and I am looking for a variance on this.
That's it? Okay. We did, we do have the materials in the, I don't know if you wanna, need to share the screen, we can, if anybody needs to. We have the materials, it's, I guess there's a a stone patio adjacent to your swimming pool, and then on that, there's a cabana that's three hundred and seventy feet. I guess I have a question for Kathleen. This, the twenty-seven percent in lieu of fifteen, it wouldn't seem to me that this three hundred and six feet is that much above fifteen percent. Was there regulations or something that was not calculated previously?
Absolutely. So if the applicant provided a list of the certificate of occupancies from the building department, and in that list, you can see that there's the original single-family dwelling in two thousand and seven, and then in two thousand and ten, there are two certificate of occupancies, one to construct a two-story addition over the crawl space to garage and accessory apartment on the first with a new bedroom, full bath and walk-in, and the second is to construct a twenty-one by forty-foot non-diving in-ground swimming pool. Both of those received a certificate of occupancy in two thousand and eleven. That was prior to the zone change that occurred in the town of Monroe in two thousand and thirteen, where based on my research, what was once considered to be building coverage was then converted to site coverage in the RF one zoning district in the town of Monroe. So both of, all three of those, two thousand and eight, two thousand and eleven, two thousand and eleven certificate of occupancies, all created additional impervious surface that got us to, I believe it was, and let me look at Tracy Lewis's map, because he did a pretty good job outlining that, I believe got us to somewhere around twenty-five percent. I don't think he calculated it, but when we calculated it in-house, oh, it got us to twenty-five point three five percent. So that's under lot coverage, under existing conditions, he calculated what the existing conditions were. So that was pre-existing non-conforming. So the coverage of twenty-seven percent, which is basically rounding up from the twenty-six point one six percent, the twenty-five point three five was legal. It was a legal increase of impervious surface at that time, prior to the change of zones. Everything got renamed in two thousand and thirteen, plus there was some slight alterations to the zoning regs. I believe one of those alterations was to go from building coverage to site coverage. So now the current regulations talk about fifteen percent site coverage in an RF one district. So the ask is really an increase from twenty-three point three five percent, rounded up to twenty-seven percent, just to have the commission, just to have the board have an understanding that the ask is not actually from fifteen percent to twenty-six point to twenty-seven percent, the ask is actually from twenty-five point three five percent to twenty-seven percent. I will also make it clear that this is an already-built patio and cabana. The request for this variance is actually to rectify a violation for an increase of impervious surface without a permit, and that is why the applicant is here tonight.
Thank you, Kathleen, I appreciate that. Again, Jim went for the record, and it just my math, the three oh, the three hundred and six square feet that we're looking at here, based on the lot size of thirty-seven thousand and change would be eight, eight, about eight tenths of one percent. At least for that, that alone. So there must be some other things that kind of got factored into going from twenty-three point three five to twenty-seven, but, but suffice it to say, there's been a change in how, so, so when the regs were changed, the, the, the lot coverage didn't move from fifteen percent to a higher number when they, when the regulations added in all the other impervious things.
I believe it changed from building coverage to site coverage.
Correct, but they didn't increase the percentage permitted, factoring out all of the other impervious cover pieces to that. Okay, so in short, yeah, I didn't think that this, this was a more than, it didn't look like it was more than a tw- a twelve percent increase to me at three. So three hundred and six feet, it's, it's a tenth, just, just rounded off a tenth of a percent. Okay, um, do any members of the board have any questions? No, I, I have, all right, I'll have a question of the applicant, Mr. Mezzick, when, when was this additional patio piece constructed?
In June.
In June, June of this year, okay. Okay. And the cabana, it doesn't add, because that's a roof over a top of existing patio, so it's not, not a double dipping there. Okay.
I guess, is it a concrete patio?
Yes, stamped.
Stamped concrete?
So when we're talking about coverage, we're just talking about the difference of adding the patio, the percentage is everything, the, the patio that was already there next to the pool, plus this pool, plus the additional, right? The percentage calculates all that? And it's just about a two or a three percent change?
Correct. So when we talk about site coverage, per our definition, it's any impervious surface. So that's any structure, the building, any sheds, pools, patios, sidewalks, asphalt driveways, things of that nature, all is calculated into your total site coverage for the property. RF one districts, residential and farming one districts, the way our zoning code is written, is for site coverage as compared to building coverage, which would just be for the actual building of the structure. And again, as I had mentioned, they do have a valid certificate of occupancy for the swimming pool, the patio, and the construction of the garage area. So the variance that's being requested tonight is for just the additional shaded in area in red of the patio with the cabana on top of it.
Okay, thank you.
So again, so if it's approved, you're approving that piece. If it's denied, you're only denying that piece, that three hundred and six square feet, you're not denying the rest of the impervious surface on site.
Any other questions?
I just have a question about the letter that was written from Eric Lindstrom.
Yes.
He's claiming that this would have a negative effect on the possible shift with the rain to his property, rain and, and soil that would run off onto his property? Is that what he's saying? I'm not sure. The objection, or if he just noticed recently during the, the bigger rainfall that we had, that this was happening, or that he maybe sees that it will happen in the future? I'm not sure if it's something.
Well, I, I, Kathleen, I see there's, he may be present at the meeting, so let's wait and see if he want, wishes to speak once we get the public comment.
Okay.
But it's a good, that's a good, a good question. Any members from the board before we move on to public, and then we can circle back?
I don't have that letter. Is there something that I don't have?
Uh, it's on the website as an exhibit. And it, yeah, it was after your application, it was, yeah, it was submitted and entered into the record. And is circulated to commissioners and added as part of the record and put on the website for public viewing.
And when was this put in?
It's an email, it's an email dated Sunday, September twenty-second.
Okay. I don't have that.
You don't have, all right, I would, if, if the applicant doesn't have it, I will read it for the record, just so the applicant can potentially respond, but I would expect that if, if the gentleman is here, he can speak for himself. But just, just for the record, I will read this, this is an email dated again, Sunday, September twenty-second, at eight thirty-three P M. Hi, my name is Eric Lindstrom, and I am the owner of forty-one Parkview Lane in Monroe, and I'm also the chairman of the inland wetlands commission here in Monroe. I received a letter from the applicant at thirty-seventh Parkview Lane regarding a proposed variance to permit twenty-seven percent impervious coverage in lieu of the maximum fifteen percent to allow for patio and gazebo already constructed. I have no issue with the structure in and of itself. My concern is with allowing for that significant of an increase in the impervious coverage. My property is approximately six feet lower than that of thirty-seven Parkview, and it is in direct path of storm-related water flow coming from the rear of their property. I have lived here for fifteen years, and only in the last month since the structure was completed did I experience rainwater coming into my basement. I realized that it occurred during an unprecedented series of events. However, my property should not have an increased risk because my neighbor chose to forego the proper permitting process and build a structure that would not have otherwise been approved. I therefore respectfully ask that you deny the application, as it does not meet the hardship standards required to increase the impervious coverage to twenty-seven percent. Thank you, Eric Lindstrom.
All right, so during that storm, we all had water in our basement, so it wasn't just him, everybody on the street did. So the structure did not pose that threat.
That was when the Route thirty-four dam collapsed.
Correct.
Yep, yeah, yeah, it was clearly about a month ago, that Sunday storm was, was rather unprecedented.
Right.
Okay, so.
Okay.
Okay, well, you could, you'll have a chance to respond if there's public comment, Mr. Mezzick, you'll have, you'll get the last word as the applicant to a chance to respond. So with that, we'll move on at this point to see if there's anybody from the public that wishes to comment. I see a box labeled Eric, I don't know if that's Mr. Lindstrom, if he cares to comment or not, but this is the opportunity for any member of the public that wishes to be heard. If so, you could just unmute yourself and state your name for the record.
And I, I apologize, is there any way that I can read the notice of public hearing into the record, or we can vote to waive reading it into the record?
Um, I kind of introduced the item, so I would entertain a motion to waive the reading of the call.
I second.
Well, that's, that's a motion by Ben, is there a second to, to that?
A second, second that motion.
Kathleen, all those in favor of waiving the reading of the public hearing notice, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you, Kathleen, that's, that's, we're gonna go to members of the public, I see Eric with his hand up, go ahead, please, unmute yourself and.
Hi, my name is Eric Lindstrom. I'm at forty-one Parkview Lane, right next door to the Mezzicks. So obviously, you, you read my letter, you read my concerns. You know, as far as, you know, water in the basement, yeah, maybe we all did, but again, I just want to make sure that everything is being done to make sure that any of the stormwater that does potentially run off from this doesn't affect my property, because just like everybody else, we had lots of water runoff. But now you have, you know, increased lot coverage with more impervious surface, that just means more stormwater coming out to my property. So that's just my concern here.
Okay, thank you for your comments. I see, looks like alternate member Margaret Lee has her hand up. Margaret, do you want to unmute? Do you have a question?
Yes, I do, being new to this game. My question would be that since this application for an increase in impervial, in the amount of impervious drainage lack thereof, this, this, this request came after the onset of the fifteen percent impermeable rule. It would strike me that this request is not in any way grandfathered in because it, because it became, because it was, it, because it arrived after the date when the new rule came into effect. So therefore, I'm wondering why it would be that this, this request should be permitted when it actually not only met the previous requirement, assuming that it even passed under the previous zoning.
It did.
Why it would be permitted to be increased, which to me sets a precedent.
Well, I, I, that's, that's the role for us to determine whether.
Yeah, that's a question I had, but that's a question I had.
Yeah, that's essentially the essence of any application to the zoning board of appeals. It's, it wouldn't be before us if it were compliant with the regulations. So the nature of any variance application is that there's relief being sought from the rule, and then it's our judgment to determine whether there are factors that, that warrant its approval or not. So just by the nature of it being requested, they're asking for an exception to the rule, and that's no different than any, any matter that will ever come before this board. It's our role to determine whether there's any, you know, factors that, that warrant its consideration or, or not. So we'll, we will get into that once we close the hearing and deliberate on the matter. But that's, that's kind of a fundamental question for, for any variance application.
Okay, thank you for that.
I don't see any other members of the public present, so I'll close public comment. I don't, Mr. Mezzick, do you have any response to Mr. Lindstrom's comments? Or wish to make any, you don't, it's not required?
Oh, Kim?
Yes.
Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ron's got a question.
No, that's okay. I get, there's one area I'm not completely clear on. Do I understand that a request was made to permit the structure being built, and the request was denied? Or is this a case of a permit was never obtained?
A permit was never obtained, and a violation was issued for the increase of impervious surface, the, both the cabana and the patio underneath it, without a buy, without a valid certi- certification of zoning compliance. And therefore, the applicant was given a letter of voluntary compliance, and as part of that remediation process is requesting a variance. So no, a permit was never granted for the structure.
Okay. Could I ask of the applicant why that permit was not applied for?
The structure is not a permitted structure.
The structure's not permanent, the patio, we did not know that we needed a permit to extend the whole patio.
The rules changed.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Ron, or any other members of the board?
One question I do have for Eric. I, I mean, this is Ben Maene, board member. For Eric, is the, I assume I can ask the public the question or follow-up question?
You can, he's, he's not obligated to respond, but as, as just a member of the public, but if, if you have a question, he can choose to answer or not answer.
Okay. From my understanding, he's fine with the structure overall. His main concern is if this structure is, if this addition or this additional structure that was done in June is increasing water flow to his property. Is that, my question is, is that an assumption, or is that just a thought? Or is there any kind of way to prove that's happening or not happening?
I don't know, Mr. Lindstrom, do you care to respond to that? It's, it's not mandatory that you do so, but.
Yeah, sorry, I thought I was unmuted. So I witnessed, just like everybody else, lots of rain in the last, you know, big rainstorm, and I clearly saw all the water running down his side of the property across my backyard, and then it looped around coming into my back, my lower basement door. So, yeah, I witnessed it, you know, I witnessed it coming down from, from his property onto mine, so. You know, can I prove it? No, I didn't take videos or pictures of it, but I stood there and watched it myself happen.
But the patio made that happen?
Our property's always been six foot.
All right, let's not, let's not get in the back and forth between speakers. There was a question was asked and answered, and if there's no other questions, then Mr. Mezzick, you have a chance for rebuttal at this point. Just address your comments to the board, not, not to Mr. Lindstrom.
Okay. Is there a conflict of interest here? What board is he on right now?
He's on the inland wetlands commission, but that's not a, a conflict in my view.
How so?
Because he's just raising the point as a neighbor, not as necessarily a board member, that, that doesn't have any jurisdiction over this proposal, as far as I understand it.
Okay.
I guess the only thing that I would say is that our property has always been however many feet he says above his. And he's just gauging this off of, you know, one of the worst storms we've seen here in decades. So I, I don't know that that's proof that the patio is causing that.
Okay, any other questions before I close the hearing for comment? All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Thank you all for your comments. We will move on to our deliberative session now. So at this point, Claire, you will be deliberating amongst the regular members. Yeah, so it's just for the sake of discussion, does anybody put a motion on the table so we can have discussion on the matter? Kathleen? I'm sorry, Christina?
So motion to either approve or deny?
Well, you need to choose one.
I know, that's what you're, so not.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yes, I, I need to, a motion to either approve or deny the application, just so we can discuss it.
Okay, so I'm in a motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I second it.
Was that Claire?
Yep, that's me.
Thank you, Claire. Okay, again, this for discussion, we will, we'll, we'll move it one after discussion, but, but go ahead, Christine, if you've got. I've got some comments, but I'll let you guys go first.
Okay, so I think the structure itself, what I'm going off of is the actual map and the proportion of what they've done. And so if, so the variance is not actually the twenty-seven, or from the fifteenth to the twenty-seventh, it's more like a two, two and a half percent variance that they're asking for, since the rules have changed. They didn't realize they needed the permit, which is understandable, I don't know, you know, they didn't think they were building anything, it's just kind of the patio, which I get, even though it has the pergola or the cabana built above it. The cabana doesn't need to be permitted, like they said, it's just that area with a stamped concrete that they have. It is a small area, in my opinion, and the only concern I had was with the neighbor's objection, that maybe it would be detrimental to his property, but I just, if it's a property, I don't think it would affect the, the downpour or the rainfall that would come onto his property all that much, meaning that little bit of land, you know, wouldn't absorb however much rain into that slab. I think he saw one of, you know, downfall that was, you know, not precedented for many, many, many years, and saw what everybody else saw, which was the downpour of rain, or the, 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 the rain coming down toward his property into his door. I don't know that that's necessarily going to be a problem, you know, with this little bit of a stamped concrete.
Then Claire, you seconded the motion, do you have anything to add to that?
Um, okay, sorry, I didn't realize a permit was needed, needed either. I agree, it was hard to know, the regulations had changed too, so, and for such a small area.
Okay, anybody, I have some comments, but any, anybody else? Ron or Ben? Okay, I, again, Jim went for the record, I, I would have, when I first read this, I saw, wow, twenties, from thirteen, fifteen percent to twenty-seven seemed like a big jump, and, and I wouldn't ordinarily support such a, a change, but I appreciate Kathleen's explanation. By my math, the three hundred and six feet is less than one percent. If, in, in, there was a reg change, I, I saw that storm too. I live at a bottom of a hill, I had water cascading through, through my yard and partially into my basement. I don't think that is necessarily the measuring stick we should be using here. That was an unbelievable biblical rainstorm. Three hundred and six square feet is not going to generate a huge amount of runoff, and given the distance, if it was right up against the property line, maybe, but there's a fair amount of lawn between this and the abutting neighbor. I do respect Mr. Lindstrom's concerns, given the overall topography that he is lower than this property. I did look at the topographic maps online as a result of his letter. In, while certainly it's not going to, a, a, a ten-inch rain in, in six hours that we had is, is not going to be handled by any drainage system, but there appears to me to be a swale, excuse me, along the rear of the property line that should direct lesser flows away from the house. I'm, I'm not an engineer, but, but it, it doesn't look, I, I don't anticipate that this small a percentage with that much distance between the properties is going to yield a negative impact from a drainage standpoint. And, and I think the, the issue here is the change in the regulations that in, when we're, while this is a big number, twenty-seven percent, it's kind of making up for some of the things that got swept up in that new definition that weren't counted previously. So this incremental three hundred and six feet is far less of a number than what we're being technically asked to, to approve. So that's where I stand on the matter, so. But I do respect the concerns raised by the neighbor, but I think it's a de minimis impact based on the small square footage. But I, so that's it, if anybody else feels differently or has any comment before we vote, please raise your hand, and I'm happy to hear it.
Hi, Jim, this is Ben. I agree with your assessment, I think it's a very tiny area. When you first look at it, going from fifteen to twenty-seven seems like a big jump, but that's not what's happening here. And I don't think that patio is going to have a significant effect on the rainfall.
Any other comments before we call the vote? I'm sorry, Ben.
I was gonna say, we all got hit with, you know, torrential rain and water flowing everywhere, nowhere to go in that recent storm. Hopefully it'll never happen again.
Exactly. Any other comments before we call for the vote? All right, the, the motion on the floor is to approve the variance as discussed. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand or say aye.
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 That is a five to one approval.
Five to zero.
I'm sorry, five to zero. Thank you, Ben. Kathleen, I appreciate the, the, the explanation and clarity in the change in the regulation that was helpful for our discussion, thank you for that.
Yes, thank you.
So next, we have pending minutes from our last meeting. I know Claire, you were not on the board at, at that point, so I think the four of us, the rest of us were here, if anybody wants to make a motion on the minutes of our meeting of September the third, that would be appreciated.
And move the minutes to be accepted as written?
All right.
I second, Ben, Ben seconded it.
All right, motion by Ron, seconded by Ben to approve the minutes, all those in favor say aye. Alright, motion by Ron, seconded by Ben to approve the minutes, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those are approved. And as Kathleen mentioned in the packet, there was a twenty twenty-five regular meeting schedule. That needs to be on file with the town clerk, um, it's generally the first. Tuesday of the month, um, with notes that September second is the day after Labor Day, obviously, and Election Day is Election Day. Um, probably not, m- maybe we move off of the November fourth election day. Me, uh, when the time comes, but I would say that I don't know that we need to modify the schedule yet, we can file that as a placeholder and. We may or may not have a meeting on that day, and if and and if we have a need for a November meeting, maybe we can choose another day, but. Um, for the sake of getting something on, you know, placeholders with the town clerk. I would suggest we make a motion to approve the schedule for twenty twenty-five.
Motion to approve, Ben?
Thank you, Ben.
Christina, so go ahead.
Seconded by Ron, um, in uh alternate members, this is not a a variance application, so feel free if you have any comments or issues with the. Regular meeting schedule as proposed. Um, seeing none, uh, all those in favor of the motion to approve the schedule, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, that's a unanimous uh approval, Kathleen, do we have anything to discuss, I'd just like to welcome the the new uh. Uh, alternate members, thank you for uh jumping in, um, I um. We can, if if need be, I'm happy to have a conversation with any of you going forward, or Kathleen, I'm sure is available to help you procedurally. Uh, if you have any questions about our process, uh, feel free to reach out uh to me or to Kathleen, I'm happy to uh to discuss that uh along the way. Uh, but thank you for your interest and for your attendance, uh, because we're a five-member board. Uh, and the the state law requires that four out of five votes, you need four affirmative votes to uh approve a variance, so. When there's five of us uh present and voting, that's more fair to an applicant than when there's only four of us. Uh, so we're happy to have uh some other folks uh be able to step in when uh regular members are are not available, so so thank you for that, and we look forward to. Uh, getting to know you a little bit more, even if it's only virtually, so. With that, unless anybody has any other comment, uh, we can adjourn, but I'm happy to, if anything, has a, anybody has anything to say?
Thank you so much.
Oh, I'm sorry. Any other business we need, uh, Margaret, is your hand still up or or is that from before? Your hand is not up, okay, alright, Kathleen.
I was gonna say, I hope not, but I just realized it was. I think my cursor scrolled over there on its own.
Well, uh, again, thanks to the three of you for joining us, uh, we look forward to having you participate more uh down the road, so. Uh, with that, I will adjourn the meeting and uh wish everybody a pleasant evening.